Good evening. The time is now 5:30. We're going to begin the board meeting this evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Perth Amboy Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the bulletin board in the administrative headquarters building, mailing notices to the home Tribune, El Diario La Prensa, City Clerk Kopch, as well as all other persons requiring notification pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law. Mr. Lowbrace, could you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Crawford. Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Gomez.
Present.
Mr. Marte. Mr. Keles.
Present.
Ms. Velez.
Present.
Vice President Melendez. President Gonzalez.
Present.
Yevakarm.
Thank you, Mr. Lowbrace. And now we'll hear from our student representative, Mr. Angel Cruz.
Good evening, honorable members of the Board of Education, esteemed administrators, and respected community members. I am delighted to be before you once again as the student representative of Perth Amboy High School and to share the remarkable achievements and vibrant activities that have transpired at our school over the past month. Please excuse my attire today as the Perth Amboy baseball team is currently in practice, however, this is one of my top priorities. So, without further ado, the National Honor Society conducted a highly successful Valentine's Day rose sale, which not only brought smiles to many faces, but also helped raise funds for future NHS projects. This event has become a cherished tradition, demonstrating the creativity this organization exhibits. Similarly, the Science National Honor Society has also fundraised through several bake sales throughout this past month. These events were well received, with students and faculty alike enjoying the homemade treats while contributing to a good cause. Turning to athletics, our winter sports season has concluded with notable performances across the board. Our boys' wrestling team has ended the season with a record of six and 12, and our girls' wrestling team finished at eight wins and 10 losses. At the GMC tournament, we celebrated the success of four girls who were medalists, and we had two GMC finalists, one boy and one girl, highlighting the competitive spirit and resilience of our athletes. Our girls' basketball team concluded their season with a record of six wins and 17 losses and made an impressive run to the state tournament, showcasing their determination and teamwork. The boys' basketball team achieved a remarkable milestone, ending the season with a record of 15 wins and 12 losses. This marks the most wins in over 15 years for our boys' basketball program. Two of our players scored over 400 points each this year, two were named first-team All Division, and the team made it to the state tournament for this first time in approximately four to five years. During these games, the student council were particularly active, organizing highly successful and engaging student sections. These sections not only boosted school spirit, but at one point even drew participation from the opposing team's fans, creating a fun and inclusive atmosphere for all attendees. Looking ahead, the student council is busy planning several exciting events for the spring. These include the Spring Fling Dance, the Mass Singer Event in collaboration with Triem Music Honor Society, the first-ever Perth Amboy High School Car Show, and the Battle of the Classes event. Each event is designed to foster community spirit, showcase our student talents, and provide enjoyable experiences for everyone involved. In conclusion, this past month at Perth Amboy High School has been filled with energy and achievement and community engagement. Our students continue to excel in academics, the arts, and athletics, and we look forward to see what the spring season will bring. Thank you for continued support of our students and our school. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. There will be no presentations this evening. Meeting is open to the public for discussion of agenda items and non-agenda items. There will be only one public participation session at this meeting. At this time, comments are invited on any matter. Public participation shall be governed by Policy Number 0167. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No member of the public may address or question board members individually. Although the board encourages public participation, it reserves the right through its presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The board discourages the public from speaking negatively about any employee, administrator, or student. Individuals can be held personally liable for defamatory or libelous statements made at public meetings. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by members of the public. Comments regarding employees, administrators, or students cannot be legally responded to by any member of the board or administration. I need a motion to open public comments.
Motion.
Second. Public comments are open? There's no one at the microphone for public comments. Mrs. Pepe, is there anyone on Zoom?
Hi, yes. Good evening. I do have people in the remote session. Good evening. My name is Dr. Pepe. I'm the IT Director, and I'll be moderating the remote public portion of the meeting tonight. For those of you who wish to speak, we'll use the Raise Your Hand feature in Microsoft Teams. For those of you calling in remotely to raise your hand, you need to press *5, and then follow the system prompt to unmute. Anyone in the remote wish to speak? There are no participants in the remote that have their hands up that wish to speak. Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to close public comments.
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Public comments are closed. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting wherein the board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 10:4-12B 1 through 9. Now therefore, be resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B for the purpose of discussing the following matters: personnel and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. It is anticipated that the length of time of this executive session will be no more than 60 minutes tonight, and that action may be taken in public after the executive session. I need a motion to enter executive session.
Motion.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. The time is 6:32. I need a motion to close the executive session.
Motion to close?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Amendments and revisions to the agenda. Mr. Lowbrace?
So there is an addendum that was placed out for public, and there are no additional revisions other than the addendum that was placed out for public.
Thank you, Mr. Lowbrace. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on February 6, 2025. Approval of executive session minutes of meeting held on February 6, 2025. Approval of the bills list for March 13, 2025, and the following payrolls: January 31, 2025, February 14, 2025, February 28, 2025. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Moving to correspondence. Mr. Lowbrace?
There is no correspondence for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lowbrace. Time is 6:46, and this meeting is back to order. Mr. Lowbrace? Can we have the board secretary report?
Purported bid opening. District opened bid for two vehicles: Bus #23, Freightliner Thomas; C2 Conventional Bus, Shepherd Bus 5,0888; Sunset Transportation $1,000; Holcombe Bus Company $6160; Garrus Transportation $6650. Bus #21, ICCE Conventional Bus, Shepherd Bus 5,0888; Sunset Transportation $1,000; Simplis Safe Transportation $4,200; Holcombe Bus Company $5,300; and Garrus Transportation $3,000. Secretaries' report for the month of January 2025. Treasurers' report for the month of January 2025. District opened January 1 with $48,273,14698. Cash receipts of $74,978,727. Cash disbursements $72,667,76173, and an ending cash balance of $50,584,11237. Acceptance of the reports of the secretary and treasurer as submitted and as being in agreement for the month of January 2025. Acceptance of certification from the board secretary that no major line item has been over expended for the month of January 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Lowbrace. And now to Dr. Ramon for the superintendent's report.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by recognizing two colleagues from this district. They are exceptional. I will speak about the first individual, Dr. Jerry Mast, principal of Humeleski, who's going to be retiring. Is she here so we can embarrass her? Okay. Dr. Mast is very well-regarded, very well-respected. She's given her heart and soul to this district. I know that it's going to be difficult for her to move forward, but she's done good work here. Separately aside from the work that she's done as a principal, an educator, and a leader, I want to commend her for her dedication as the administrative pasta liaison head rep for the district for a number of years. We've actually been able to have collegial conversations for the past decade, myself and her, and also the board, and she was someone that was always very dignified in the manner in which she engaged with us. We didn't always agree, but that was okay. We kept it professional, and we kept it very respectful, and not only do I appreciate that, but I know the board appreciates that. In addition, the district is well-suited because of that, because there's a demonstration of how a board administration and a union can get along and work well together. So, for that, I thank you. I also thank you for the love that you've given to children and all the years that you've been here, which is probably the biggest thing that we could say about you. And our next colleague, exceptional leader, exceptional human being, Keith Guarino, principal of Perth Amboy High School. Keith is one of those individuals that came here from another district, and I wanted to make mention of that because he came here, and no one can deny the fact that he made this district his own, and he loves the children of this community. And he's somebody that you would always see working with children, and children gravitating towards him. He helped to transition this building to where it is with Carla. So, he's going to... I also, you know, he was the one who went to the ninth-grade academy when it needed somebody to go there that had structure. And if you ever have an opportunity to talk to Keith privately, what you're going to find is someone that's really caring, really dedicated, and he's a true gentleman, from the day I met him to the moment that he's going to leave. And he's going to surely be missed. So, Mr. Guarino, thank you so much for your years of service here as well. Tonight, I wanted to speak about what we're going to be putting forward to the county for approval for the year 2026. I want to be very clear in making note that on the agenda this evening is the preliminary board approval for the budget. It is not the final. It's the preliminary. On March 20, the submission will be given to the state. April 15, the final revisions and advertisement will take place. We will have a final board approval in May 8, and a submission of the final approved budget to the state May 9. There'll be opportunity for public comment on the budget either in April and May. When we do the presentation, we will advertise it as such to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak about the budget and their ideas and thoughts and hopes for next year. Tonight, again, it's just the preliminary preapproval of the budget. What's important to note about this evening's budget is a number of things, and I'm going to take a few minutes to go over it. One of the things I wanted to start off with saying is that the Board of Education has done an outstanding job in stepping forward and dealing with a budget that had to be balanced, where there was no tax increase for the past decade. And I applaud the board for doing what they need to do to address this fiscal matter and to ensure fiduciary responsibilities of this district. I'd also like to thank the administrators that were involved in this, especially the business office, our attorney, in putting this very complicated budget together, which I'm going to speak a little bit about of how we got here. In the future, as I stated, there'll be a presentation about the revenues and the expenses and how we built the budget. But one of the most important things we wanted to share this evening was due to the board's efforts, due to the business office, the assistant superintendents, director, personnel, and our attorney, we were able to face a crisis that is going to be put to the side that won't impact this district. Increasing costs such as health care, salaries, and utilities place constant pressures on districts. I'm sure that everyone's very aware of that. It is due to the effort of the individual I mentioned that we are pleased to announce that effective July 1, 2025, eligible employees will be enrolled in New Jersey Schools' Employees' Health Benefits Program. That's the state program. And so, when you think about it in those terms, it gives you a sense of comfort, knowing that our district is going to be going into the state plan. Where the state goes, we all go. And so, therefore, it's a lot more comforting to know that our benefits and our futures and individuals that retire will receive all the benefits that they need. In addition to that, our current members who are here will continue to be offered our premier benefits. We're going to continue to have our benefits offered by Aetna, our current health insurance provider. Tomorrow, there'll be information going out to our employees about this. Here's the important piece to mention and to denote. Excuse me. The restructuring of the district's health benefits allows all employees to not only be insured by the state of New Jersey in the same Aetna network, it also allows us to do estimated savings of over $27 million for the district in the 2025-2026 school year. Without those savings and without moving into this health benefits program, there could have been a reduction of staff, both tenured and non-tenured, of approximately 300 positions next year. That would have been cut from our district, including both, again, tenured and non-tenured instructional staff. Due to this move that's on the agenda this evening and the efforts of everyone that was involved in this, we are able to avert that crisis, a $27 million shortfall. Excuse me. To ensure clarity, the district has been actively engaged with the Perth Amboy American Federation of Teachers through our attorneys and also in other meetings, and with our pasta colleagues to ensure a seamless transition into, excuse me, the School Employees' Health Benefits Program. Rest assured, details and information sessions will be forthcoming, well in advance of July 1, 2025. There are many things that have to take place for this to occur seamlessly. The business office will be leading this charge. It will be communicating to our staff. And I would just want to end by thanking everyone for their continued dedication and service to the students of Perth Amboy at this time. Moving forward now with the budget. So now you know that we just averted a $27 million shortfall, which is a tremendous obstacle that we have been working on since last year tirelessly up until this moment. In addition, a few other things I wanted to make mention. It's important to talk about this one aspect. Our district continues to do more with less per pupil cost. Our pupil costs compared to our counterparts are less per student, yet we are producing higher results. One of those results, I'm just going to ask Dr. Medina if you could just please mention one of them that we just received.
To begin with, our graduation rate is increasing. Also, today, we got confirmation from the US World News and World Reporting Ranking that DLS has been identified as one of the top 40 top-performing schools in the state of New Jersey. US World News Ranking collects data from standardized assessments, and they identify high-performing schools. And DLS is a proud receiver of that award at the recognition at the national level. So that's great news to share. Another important news is regarding our special ed program and inclusion rate that the State Department collects. They have released a new feature in their website called the Dashboard, in which you can go and see how Perth Amboy compares to the state and the national level in terms of inclusion. Perth Amboy has surpassed the state level, which is 43% of inclusion rate, and we are about 63%, 64%, and the national level is 65%. So we're slightly above the national level, and we should be very proud to accomplish that. Yes, please. You may go.
Thank you, Dr. Medina. So, a lot of great news there. I mean, the fact that for 10 consecutive years going through to the 11th, our graduation rates are going up, and the cost of our pupil, per pupil cost is lower than anyone else, I think speaks to a lot of individuals' hard work throughout this district. Every single employee, every single staff member, board member, past and present, administration and attorney, we're dedicated to that. Now, it's also important to note this. 11 years with no tax increase, no school tax increase. 11 years. And when you hear that, you wonder how are we able to accomplish all of the wonderful things that we've been able to accomplish. But you notice that if we don't have a tax increase this year, we would be in dire states, including the money that we just saved from our health benefits. The property tax breakdown, and we'll get more into this when we talk about this in a few months, the Perth Amboy property taxes consist of county taxes, municipal taxes, and school tax. No school tax has been raised for the past decade, and I think sometimes that's a bit confused when individuals say that the taxes have gone up. They have municipal taxes, county taxes, no school taxes. So, again, for the past 11 years, excuse me, Perth Amboy schools not had a school tax increase. Each year, Perth Amboy homeowners have paid increasing amounts for municipality and county taxes, yet the local school tax portion of homeowners' property tax has not been increased. This year, due to the diligence and the foresight of our Board of Education and our administrative team, the taxes will be increased. However, they are significantly low to ensure the integrity that we're not impacting our families and our community. The average household annual increase will be approximately $276 a year, $276 a year, which comes out to a household monthly increase of $23, approximately $23 tax increase per month. If you take a look at the actual tax increase to the average taxpayer from school tax, that's 3.71 over 11 years. And so, I want to thank the board, the attorney, and all the administrators who were able to really work hard to put this budget forward. What's next? Well, as I stated, preliminary board approval this evening. Prepare for the final budget approval and submission in May. Begin coordination process for our health benefits. Transition so that it's seamless for our staff members into the state plan. Disseminate necessary information to staff for a seamless transition. Please recognize that the business office will be handling this. Reach out to them. If you have any questions, they can assist you in anything that you may have as far as a question related to your personal concerns. Now, I would like to move on to the next item, which is the calendar update that we currently have on our agenda. Make note of the following, please. Last month, we had May 23 become a day off for the district. Richardson must attend school on May 23 for a day they had to encumber earlier this year due to a facilities issue at the building. We have three snow days left. The calendar will be going out tomorrow. I just wanted to make note of it here for transition and transparency, that on April 17 is now a day off for the district. April 16 is now an early dismissal. May 27 is a day off for the district. June 20 is a day off for the district. Please note this. If there's snow anytime this year, the first date removed from the calendar would be April 17. The second would be May 27, and the third would be June 20. So, you'll receive this information tomorrow in an email. It'll be on the website. I believe it's going to go out on the app as well tomorrow. So, please adhere to that, and we'll send out reminders, obviously, as we move forward periodically. District planning. We're coming to the culminating point of almost a decade of different things that have transpired in this district. 10 years ago, we are a little, maybe, was it 10 or 9? I'm not sure exactly. But we had to transition our dual-language program to DLS in Ford's, and we're happy to say that we're bringing them back home next year. The DLS program will be going to Eagle Avenue for a year. After that, they will go to their permanent homes somewhere within the district. The savings for that is $1.4 million that we're able to put back into the budget. More importantly, our DLS children, students come back home. I know that there's, sometimes you hear things out there, you know, we're getting rid of the DLS program. No, that's not happening. We're actually building the program again in hopes that it can continue. We're now bringing it back home. Next year, we'll also be working on, at this point in time, you'll hear me speak about, almost the final transition of the district of all the elementary schools, the middle schools. Again, something that's been in the works for 10 years is culminating next year and the following year, and the hope is to leave this district in good position so that it continues for years to come with future leaders, board members, and staff members. So, I'm looking forward to continually speaking to you about all the planning that will be happening. We're on time with our planning, and that's something that we're very, very proud of. A lot of work goes into that. One last thing I'd like to say is this. Sometimes we don't hear enough about our athletics, and I wanted to make mention of this today. Boys' basketball. The season was a great success. It really was. The team achieved 15 wins, the most the school has won in the last 14 years. We have qualified for the state playoffs as a 16th seed. Success was achieved in many areas with tremendous sportsmanship, and that's what I wanted to raise. We continually receive accolades for how our students behave when they go to other districts, for the manner in which they engage, for their sportsmanship. That's something that we don't emphasize. That's something that we are, that we don't emphasize enough, but we're recognized for that. And our students and our children are recognized as having great sportsmanship. So I want to congratulate them. I want to congratulate all of the individuals and the team sports we have. And I'm looking forward to continuing to bring good news like this to us in the future. Madam President, that ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ramon. Mr. George.
Madam President, I'd like to move item number one on page four to item seven on page six.
Any, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. I'd like to pass, I'd like to make a motion to pass the personnel items from number one on page seven to number 15 on page 11. I believe there were a few amendments, so those are included. Mr. Lo Brice, will you do the roll call, please?
Do we have discussion on this?
Sorry, need a second first.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Ditto to the superintendent's comments on Mr. Guarino and Dr. Mast. I also want to recognize Diane Lapparacus. Actually, to all retirees, may it be a long, healthy and happy retirement. Diane Lapparacus, I had a chance to work with her for many years in the elementary level. She was the proverbial mother hen to her chicks. She guarded those kids. She watched over them and did everything in her power to maximize their potential. I want to thank her for many years of service.
Mr. Keles.
Would also like to congratulate Principal Keith Guarino. And as of July 1st, welcome to your first day of the rest of your life.
Thank you, Mr. Keles. Anyone else? Mr. Lo Brice, will you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Yes to everything except item number eight? That's a no.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gomez.
Yes.
Mr. Marte.
Yes.
Mr. Keles.
Yes.
Ms. Velez.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
All motions carried.
For the Finance Committee, I'd like to pass number one on page 12 through to number 50 on page 26, including any additional items that were added. Any discussion? Oh. Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I'd like to have my vote on number five recorded as abstention.
Mr. Anderson, you're abstaining from 45.
Oh, yes. Additional abstentions on finance. 46, 47, 48, 49, as previously advised.
And Mr. George, I believe you also have abstentions? I believe those abstentions are 46, 47, 48, and 49, if you can confirm.
Yes, I abstain from those four. 46, 47, 48, and 49.
Thank you. So moved. Mr. Keles, buildings and grounds, please.
Madam President, I'd like to abstain from items number one, A through N, on page 27 through 28. I need a motion to pass.
Motion to move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Keles. You can say your abstentions now.
So my abstention is items number one, A through N, on page 27 through 28.
So moved. Moving on to old business. Second reading of the following policy. 5460 high school graduation policy. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I want to cast an abstention on that.
So moved. New business. First reading of the following policy. 9163 spectator code of contact for interscholastic events. Approval of the revised 2024-2025 school calendar. And additionally, all the amendments that were provided in executive session. Any discussion? Oh, I think, I need a motion.
You got a motion?
I have it for new business or yes in general?
We just have to pass this first?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'll motion it.
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Mr. Marte, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I want to say something. So something that happened this weekend. So in the police department, we usually deal with juveniles on a daily basis, but we cannot share every story, right? For privacy and things like that. But something happened this Saturday that I want to bring to light to you because I feel that it was because of a staff member here that we were able to, who knows, maybe save a life. So Saturday, we had a child, 12-year-old here from Perth Amboy that left her residence at 1:00 in the afternoon, and she never made it home that day. You know, at 2:00 in the morning, we contacted a staff member from Chos School. And she not only knew who this child was, she knew exactly who this child hanged out with. And it was because of Ms. Waters that we were able to locate this kid outside of town because of the information she provided to us. At 2:00 in the morning, I don't expect anybody to do this, obviously. But the fact that she knew this child and she knew exactly who she hangs out with, we were able to contact her friends, gain information, and eventually locate this 12-year-old female at 4:00 in the morning in another town. I understand that your job as a staff member is not to ask kids how they're doing and things like that. But believe me when I tell you that we have, I get it, we have a lot of troubled kids in Perth Amboy. But always remember, troubled kids are not self-made. Something happened to this kid. Maybe where they come from, something with their family, their friends, that made them trouble. If you look at a one-year-old or a five-month-old baby, they're perfect. All of a sudden, you know, they become a little older. Like, something happened. So if something in the back of your head tells you, hey, something is not wrong with the student, don't be afraid of questioning. I get it's not part of your job, but don't be afraid of questioning. Again, thank you, Ms. Waters. Because of your connection with this kid, we were able to bring her back home that Sunday morning. So thank you for that.
I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. This meeting is closed, and the time is 7:15. Thank you, everybody.